Good morning, everybody, and welcome. Mr. Speaker, you got the implications on?
Yes, today, I'd like to, before we pray, I'd like to say that we pray our invocation a lot of times, and we thank the Lord for our emergency services, our police and fire departments, and others that keep us safe, our property safe. I'd like to do something a little bit different today, and we all do, are thankful for all those things that we normally pray for, but looking at the condition of our country as a whole, and at this time of year in particular, when we're looking at Christmas time, I'd like to just share that something different today. And all of us are familiar with these verses. The clause, "The Lord is my shepherd," comes from one of the most beloved of all passages of Scripture, the 23rd Psalm. In this passage and throughout the New Testament, we learn that the Lord is our shepherd in two ways. First, as a good shepherd, he laid down his life for his sheep; and second, his sheep know his voice and follow him. David realized, as a shepherd himself, that we as people also need a shepherd. And so he pinned these words in Psalm 23, and I want to use this as our prayer today. Let's pray. "The Lord is my shepherd; I shall not want. He maketh me to lie down in green pastures; he leadeth me beside the still waters. He restores my soul; he leadeth me in the paths of righteousness for his name's sake. Yea, though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I would fear no evil, for thou art with me; thy rod and thy staff they comfort me. Thou preparest a table before me in the presence of mine enemies; thou anoint my head with oil; my cup runneth over. Surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life, and I will dwell in the house of the Lord forever." Amen.
Let's stand and say the pledge to the flag of the United States, the greatest country that there is, and as we say the pledge, let's keep our men and women in uniform that protect us, that has defended this flag, and our veterans that has defended it in the past. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregapped, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has somebody had the opportunity to read the minutes? Are there any corrections to the minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve. We have a motion on the floor, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Just about a genuine agenda.
Yes, sir, we've got several. One is under unfinished business. We'd like to add the farmer's market bid award. We have that in, and as you go to, as you get under that, I'll go to that. We also want a motion to approve, under consent agenda, a motion for the chairman and the clerk to execute contracts with the fire departments. These were our annual contracts with them. We had about a two-month extension on them this year, but they're ready to go. And then the other thing is, we have two properties which people want to donate to us, and Mr. Parker is working up the motion for that right now. And we'd like, I think we'd like to do that under consent agenda.
Oh, yeah, we moved the health department up there to the consent as well, rather.
Yes, I'm sorry, I forgot that. So the health department fees and also the bad debt.
Mr. Matt, make that a petition because he had another meeting to attend to.
That's right. So that will go up under the consent agenda as well.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. I guess we have time for public comments, so I'm gonna go ahead and open it up. If you'll give us your name, your phone number, and address, and it's open to anyone to come to the podium.
Mr. Chairman, before you do that, you didn't get a motion to approve your agenda.
I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Certainly.
Okay, if there are motions on the floor, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Now, there are public comments. The floor is open. Yes, sir.
My name is Christopher Foot. Some of you might know me or my family. My phone number is (919) 222-3000. I live in Mount Olive, on Ennis Springs Road, 101 Rams Place. I've spoken with Mr. Mayo. I've spoken with several people around the county and in the state. We've been dealing with child protective services for over a year now. My wife's ex-husband continually calls them on us. We have been deemed safe as a safe home for our children, and for other investigations they've done, but absolutely no evidence that any harms have been done to any children. And this time, when he called, they said since it's been going on so long, they had me removed from my home at first, and now they've removed the child from our home. And we asked on the 13th of November for a court date. We asked them to petition the court because we wanted to go before a judge. They did not do that. They said they would that day. They did not file a petition. Then we met with them again. We asked them to file a petition. It was two weeks, or three weeks after that date. We asked them to file a petition with the court again. They told us they would do it that day. They did not. They have told us four times now they would petition with the court, all right, for us to have a court date, a hearing before a judge. Four times, four times, they have not done it. They have just now done it when we, they, we contacted Mr. Mayo, and he contacted the director for social, for DSS, and they just now petitioned. They told us by their own policies we were to have a hearing within seven days. They put us a court date for January 25th. What I'm asking of y'all, is there any way that somebody can speak with the court and let us have a hearing, go forward, get a lawyer, and at least ask the judge if we can have the children in our home for Christmas? That's all I'm asking.
Thank you.
There has been no evidence of any child being harmed in our home. None at all. These are allegations made by her ex-husband, who used to beat her and was abusive to her and has tried to control our home. We have not harmed any children. Mr. Kamari, I believe your daughter can back us up on that. She knows me very well. I've been very involved in school, and I have, my mom used to be a teacher, taught for 50 years. Our family's well-known in the area. This is, these allegations are not true, and we're just trying to get the children home for Christmas.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This is probably, we need some guidance from Mr. Parker on.
I was gonna suggest that. Good answer.
And Andrew, I mean, you know, we've got, we've got two attorneys on that now, sir.
If you guys could follow up, that's what I was.
I've been making notes, I'll find out what's going on.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I make a comment as the DSS chairman?
Sure.
I've already, I've already got with the DSS director, Tammy Schrenker, over a week ago, and the only thing I can do as a DSS chairman is to make sure that the correct policies and protocol have been done in this case. And Tammy has communicated with me, and they obviously have communicated with you in the last day or so, and the, everything so far is, been done according to protocol. And that's, that's all the authority I have as a member of the DSS board.
They've had, they have told us their policies, and they have admitted that they have not followed their policies to us. They have blatantly lied to us. When we asked for a court date, they said that they have to give it to us, then that they will file a petition. It has been over two months since we asked for a petition to be filed, and they just now filed it after we contacted Mr. Mayo, and I thank you for getting involved on that. But a court date, January 25th, is a long time from now. This should have been done and handled. We should have been before court with a lawyer, so that this could have been cleared up before Christmas. And the fact they put us so far out is, is just, I mean, it's not right, to be honest.
But thank you, Mr. Foot. Counsel will follow up on it. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who cares to speak this morning?
I'm Steve L. Harin, 349 Weaver Road, Goldsboro, NC. Last night, I got some news that kinda disturbed me. According to what the county is already, county commissioners are trying to find money for more classrooms for these pre-K. And my wife's great-grandson is gonna be one year old next week, and they've already put him in school. He just learned how to walk. He rather crawled and walked rather than, now that's in Washington, DC. So y'all can see where this is coming. You've got your 12 grades, you've got your kindergarten, but now you're asked to provide classrooms for pre-K. Next thing you're gonna be asked for is provided, provide them care by time they learn how to walk. When is this gonna stop? Now, you've got extra classrooms at Meadow Lane, I understand. You've got extra classrooms at Grantham, since the old school has been putting new schools there. The county has got school rooms, classrooms, the churches for pre-kindergarten. Pre-kindergarten is not mandated by the state. And if these parents want these children to go to pre-kindergarten, their churches, maybe the library's got classroom space, the museum has got classroom space, they can find classroom space without the taxpayers being burdened with it. And I see no need to put the sales, additional sales tax on. I see no need to put in, raising county taxes, just to provide classrooms, and plenty of churches would donate classrooms for, they're not using those classrooms during the week. They use those classrooms on Sunday. And so I would advocate that those classrooms be found elsewhere besides the taxpayers' pocketbook. And if you, if you go ahead and finance classrooms and finance teachers for this pre-K, then the next thing you'll be doing is putting, it's just a babysitting service, pre-K is. And a lot of times, it's indoctrination. And it's been proven that the children learn more, at about three years old, they grasp a lot. But they need some time at home to be children, they need some time with their parents, so that you can learn how to feed them, learn how to feed yourself, learn how to walk and talk. And it just, I'm just totally against financing anything for pre-K. I think the parents ought to come up with it yourself, or either find a church or something that holds pre-K classrooms. I don't think it ought to be a burden on the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anyone else?
Charles Wright, 200 Tanya Drive, Goldsboro, (919) 273-2099. Good morning, commissioners. I come to address the board this morning for what I see as the most fragrant discrimination act that I've witnessed this board do in the 26 years I've been here. And that has to do with the community development block grant, disaster recovery, specifically the neighborhood facilities improvement portion. That portion has to do specifically, I want to bring to your attention, is the $700,000 appropriated for the Seven Springs Fire Station with a projected and expected population of 50. And also, they will be getting additional funds from emergency and disaster funds totaling, I believe, at 1.6 to 1.7 million total. At a, at a projected population of 50, that $700,000 would record, would rec, would be recommended of $14,000 per ci, per citizen for neighborhood improvement, just from the community development block grant money of $700,000 you're giving for a fire station. If we total all the disaster funds they're getting, besides the community development block grant, that per citizen, that comes to $32,000 per citizen, based upon 50 citizens as an expected population of Seven Springs. Now let's move into Goldsboro, where you have communities such as Marmack, you have communities such as Little Washington, you have communities that, all the way from Elm Street, all the way down South John Street, from Elm, all the way out to Arrington Bridge Road. You have 500, excuse me, you have 5,000 estimated population, and this is how much money you appropriated for their neighborhood facilities improvement, zero. And it's two parks involved in that neighborhood that I'm describing, two playgrounds and two parks, and also a community center. And not $1 for a gallon of paint, or a park bench, or a water fountain, none of that neighborhood is represented in your funding for the community development block grant. And I find that very discriminatory. Had Goldsboro, had this 5,000 received the same proportional amount that you're giving Seven Springs, Goldsboro from the community development grant would get $70 million. And from all the disaster funding, they would get $160 million. Now that might sound preposterous, but I just wanted to bring to your attention that I think it's very discriminatory, and it's very unfair that a community with a, with a projected population of 50 is getting such a large percentage share of the value. Spring Creeks wasn't the only community that was flooded. They got flooded bad, but so did other communities in Goldsboro, and they should have some share of this neighborhood facilities improvement fund that, that you voted on. And the only other thing I did want to point out is that you've changed that figure now three times. When you, when the 25.6 billion, you was gonna give 1.6 million dollars for neighborhood improvement. Then in October, when you found out you was only gonna get the 16.9, you dropped it down to 1.1 million, that was told that you voted on, the commissioners, 1.1 million. Then now, today, yesterday, I find out from the news articles that that has went back up to 1.6 million, and I, I don't remember reading any commissioners' meeting where those amounts were changed. It just seemed like, was it just changed in the newspaper, or did you have a vote to change the dollar amounts, or how did that come about?
Thank you, Mr. Rock, for your comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I don't usually respond, but this is so ridiculous, I think I've got to. Number one, the state has said they will give us 2/3 of the money initially, and that's why that figure went from 1.6 to 1.1. We have not changed that. That is the same numbers we've had. At one point, they were talking about it for two years, 1.6 is for three years. That's the difference. Now let's talk about this ridiculous comment about that we're building a fire station for 50 people. That's ludicrous. This county has 25 fire districts. The Seven Springs Fire Department covers a whole lot more area than 50 people in the town of Seven Springs. And if you had bothered to look up what fire districts are in this county, you would know that. So to say that we have blown that kind of money to protect 50 people is absolutely ludicrous.
I'd like to respond. Number one, this is a two-year budget.
Mr. Rock, your time is up.
Oh, I don't have a, I don't, I don't have a reason.
You can contact him afterwards.
Well, he didn't talk, he didn't shoot me down. He shot me down and saying what I'm saying is misrepresentation publicly. At least give me a, a half a minute, a good faith to respond.
You can contact him later.
Well, he could have contacted me later.
I didn't know you were gonna make comments.
Well, I didn't know you was gonna make yours, but I have a right to defend.
Well, when you say something that stupid, you have to respond.
Now he's shooting at my character.
Mr. Rock, you may. I gotta go, Mr. Rock. I know there was one more person out there who was wanting to speak. Yes, ma'am, I think it was you. Good morning.
My name is Ada Coley. My address is 205 Winslow Circle, Goldsboro. My husband's name, Bruce Coley, sitting back here, and our telephone number is (919) And since we've had many flood problems off South John Street, we are concerned about more buyouts. That's our greatest concern right now in our area, especially since there have been already this year so many hurricanes. My husband and I are retired, and we are still hoping for a buyout. We thank you very much for how you have worked so hard, been in different meetings, and how all of you and Chip and everybody is working so hard, but we still have hope. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else? Public cop, coming up. Y'all missed it and make it.
I really had no intentions of coming up here this morning. God knows I didn't. I'm still in somebody else's minutes. And my name is Constance Corum. I'm at 506 Cardinal Drive, Goldsboro, (919) 288-2830. Everybody has a right to their opinion, be it wrong, be it accurately right to the T or not. Everyone has a right to their opinion. And what is happening is it's a great shift going on in our community, and it's affecting a lot of us in ways that it does not appear that this commission or this, people are concerned about. And as Mr. Wright was saying, more people need to pay attention. There is $6 million for a tiger project. There's been millions of dollars put into downtown, and I know all of this is part of the city and not just part of the county, but the city is being heavily affected by the decisions that are being made by this commission. And we, the people, are not being considered when it comes to these decisions. Whenever I came here the last time and said that you all did not vote for Watch, you didn't give, you know, yeah, you voted, but you didn't give them the monies that they have drastically told you that we need, that they needed, in order to help citizens such as myself, who are being affected by these decisions that you're making, these buyouts of this property? These people did not know all these changes were about to take place. We are watching the city evolve great, all of this new development, all of this new infrastructure, all of these millions of dollars that are being put into artwork downtown. We're great. We know we need this so, so people will start coming into this community, but you need to also let it be known that you are concerned about the citizens in this community that are being affected. And as I said, the sixth district and the third district are deeply being affected by what is going on here. Millions of dollars are being put into this community, and we, the people, aren't getting anything from it. I am a well-able person, able to do a whole lot, could be at work right now. Mr. Parker can tell you, when I work for this county, this county could come up with no reason why I am not an employee of this county. If I could get back to work, I could help some people out and do some stuff. You all need to start considering this, the people who live in these communities, who are being affected. I asked you all a couple of sessions ago, what kind of monies are you putting in to help these people who are being affected by this flood zone? And I know y'all want me to sit down, and I do too, because I had no intentions of standing up here, but this is really getting to me. This is the Christmas season. We don't have anything to hope for whenever you are continually avoiding the people that you say you represent. That's all I'm asking. Think about those people. You got these funds that are being ended in February. These people don't even know, they don't have enough time to go get the money that you say is out there. Thank you for your time. God bless you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good morning. I'm Valora S. Figueroa, formerly of 508 Colonial Terrace Drive in Goldsboro, North Carolina. I just wanted to say, as of last week, my family, a 72-year-old mother, a 56, soon to be next month, disabled veteran husband, and myself, who is currently on disability. As of last week, we are on a two-month countdown. We was told by FEMA, even though we did not receive the FEMA trailer until February the 3rd of this year, that our 18 months did not start then. It started from the day of the disaster, so that all of the, everyone that was receiving assistance would be on a consistent, the same date. So come February next, 2018, we will have been in, according to FEMA calculation, FEMA trailer, for 18 months. By February the 10th, we will be homeless yet again, because there is no fund. I was told in September by a now, soon-to-be-retired city employee, that he was going to recommend to the city council that no FEMA trailer stay in the city property, in the city limits of Goldsboro. I was also told by the same person who's gonna retire December the 30th, that I need to come up with the money, or tear down my home, or face, and face charges for having a condemned property still within the city limits. So I asked on behalf of my mother, Elsie Rouse, my husband, Aaron A. Figueroa, Sergeant Aaron A. Figueroa of the United States Army, and myself, Valora S. Figueroa, to please, 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 please expedite any funds that would be coming to Hurricane Matthew victims. We do not want to buy out because, we do not want a buyout, because my mother and I, when we worked in Washington, DC, have saved our money, bought property down here in Goldsboro to have, to come back home to. So we do not want to buy out, we just need a helping hand. And in searching for modular homes, we're looking at minimum $170,000 to have a turnkey, walk in, raise it up to flood elevation level, and all that good stuff. This we have to do now within one month and three weeks. So I asked again on behalf of my family to please expedite any funds. We've filled out all the paperwork, we've done the two-hour process, which was almost laughable, at the VA Center on Ash Street. We've done everything except for spit on our left shoulder and jump with our right foot, that had been asked of us by FEMA, the city, everything. I'm constantly in contact with those that are in the know, I guess, with the city about what we need to do. So I'm not just sitting back, waiting for somebody else to help me. We're doing, we've been proactive ourselves. So with that, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Feliz Navidad, whatever you celebrate, but just remember, there is a family that still really needs. But just remember, there is a family that still really needs help, and we on the two-month countdown. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Steve L. Harin, three forty-nine Weaver Road, Goldsboro, NC. There's more to this than, uh, than I could express in four minutes and, uh, about this kindergarten and pre-kindergarten and stuff like that. And, uh, in other words, by the time you go to school for eighteen years, there's no wonder the dropout rate is like it is.
Mr. Harin, I appreciate you wanting to come up again, but...
Well, if we could have a work session or something, I'd love to explain. It didn't take hours to explain all this.
I'm just trying to be fair to everybody else, give their time, Frank. Thank you for coming back up. Um, we need to move on, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the comment section. Thank you. And I do have a question on these FEMA trailers. Is that true? They only get up for thirteen months?
I don't know, Dave.
That's, uh, the state's managing it with FEMA. They're, they're called totally. No local officials, uh, have any say-so whatsoever or nothing.
But we can look into that.
I, I, I would.
Please look into that.
That's, that's not right. I mean, we can't, you can't get it to them. Thank you for following up on that. Okay.
Ma'am, if you would get with, um, Mr. Crump over here and give him your information, we'll check in with FEMA. We can't override their decisions, but we can look into it for you. We'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Form a committee.
Yes, ma'am. This morning, we'd like to recommend the appointment of Dr. Ellen Brubek to the Wayne Health Corp. I'd like to put this form of motion.
As a motion on the floor, is any discussion? If I was a favor, please raise your right hand.
Next, I'd like to recommend the reappointment of Beverly Bale and Mary Ann Dudley to the Wayne County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. I'd like to put this form of motion.
And motion on the floor, is any discussion? If I was a favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
And finally, I'd like to recommend the reappointments of Jonathan Holland and Richard Lewis to the Wayne County Fireman's Relief Fund, Board of Trustees. I'd like to put this form of motion.
We have motion on the floor, is any discussion? If I was a favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, unfinished business. Starting out with the motion to approve the recommendation of the architectural contract. I think that's subject to a negotiated fee. For the EMS stations and the Shell Industrial Building, is that correct?
That's right, and we will, we will inform y'all as we finalize that.
Yeah, okay. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Motion on the floor, is any discussion? If I was a favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Next, you were gonna talk about Farmers Market a little bit.
Yes, uh, we have this handout from Noel Woods. When we got the bids in, uh, the lowest bid is five hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and three dollars. That's with taking one deduction, and that is for, um, taking out the drainage around the slab. The architect agrees with that. We had the possibility of one other deduct, uh, but Kendall and Craig and I have looked at it, and we don't recommend that. And that was, instead of using a, uh, standing seam roof, uh, is that you would use one with, um, that's tied down with, um, screws. But those have a tendency to leak, uh, around screws over a period of time. And so we're recommending that you stay with the original bid, um, and not take that twelve thousand dollar deduct. So the, so the total amount for the lowest bidder with the one deduct of seventy-two hundred is Jackson Builders', and it's five hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and three dollars. You remember, we got a five hundred thousand dollar grant from the North Carolina Tobacco Trust Fund, uh, Commission. So it is seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and three dollars more than that. But as y'all recall, we went through and redid, um, uh, the specifications on this, and we feel like everything we've got in there, we really do need to keep. So, uh, our recommendation is, is you go with this, and we'll need to, um, use seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and three dollars out of fund balance.
This is a substantial reduction from what we first saw.
It was gonna be about seven hundred and forty-seven thousand before we rework it.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If we approve this today, when are they gonna begin construction?
Just as soon as possible.
All right, and I see that completion is, what, a hundred and fifty days?
Yeah.
It's a little over four months.
Right.
All right. Yeah, they need to get started right away.
That, and that's why we want to get going.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to award the bid, uh, which was the lowest bid, to, uh, Jackson Builders.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there any more discussion? If I was a favor, please raise your right hand. Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, uh, we talked about all of it in pretty lengthy detail, but one part, and I think that Mr. Counselor was gonna bring that up, that was gonna be walked on.
Yes, the, the, uh, one that you mentioned, uh, would, would, you would add to the consent agenda is that Wayne County gratefully accepts property, uh, for an EMS station from, on the Millers Chapel Road, from Sharon Wilson Crawford and Karen Wilson Haycock, and a lot on Dakota Street in Goldsboro, uh, from Paul Robinson.
Okay. Is any questions about that?
Wouldn't like to make a comment.
Okay.
Uh, special thank you so much to the Wilson family, because that property will definitely enhance EMS service in District Six, and we certainly appreciate it, and wanted to honor them for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd also like to comment that, uh, that the location of the property that they want to donate is exactly where EMS station needed to be. And I commend that family for, for thanking enough of Wayne County and the citizens that it's gonna be protecting. Just a big thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I just wanted to make sure that y'all also included in that the add-on was the fire department contract.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Yes, so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Can I motion on the floor, is any more discussion? If I was a favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. All right, moving on to new business, and I think we've got someone here to make a presentation from, um, Senior Center.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Mr. Dean, Mr. Rosado.
Yes, that's correct. My name is David Rosado. I'm with the Eastern Carolina Council, Area Agency on Aging. I serve as the director there. And this morning, I'm here to present a certificate, uh, for the Senior Center. They've gone through a long process, uh, for the last five years, actually for the last fifteen years, uh, maintaining their services as Senior Center of Excellence. And what this is, is that the Division of Aging and Adult Services has assembled a task force. And this task force is to evaluate senior centers throughout the state, there's a hundred and sixty-two of them throughout the state, um, on how they do and how they serve the community. They're graded, they're going through a process of certification, they're reviewed from A to Z on everything they do for the senior center, for the older adults, caregivers, and to the community as a whole. This task force is consisted of senior center directors from the state, um, representation from the area agencies on aging, which are sixteen of them in North Carolina, uh, older adult representation, the Division of Aging and Adult Services, the North Carolina Institute on Aging, and the University of North Carolina Center for Aging Research and Education Services. What this means is, there are senior centers across the state. Each senior center has to meet certain criteria to be deemed a senior center. Point, just a regular senior center open forty hours a week and provide services and supports. Then the, uh, this task force was developed to create, raising the bar, to give incentives for those senior centers to go above and beyond what they normally do for the community. So they created this thing called a SCOPE, Senior Center Operations Program Evaluation. This task force goes out to these senior centers, evaluates them, and determines whether or not they meet one of the two levels, which is not just a senior center certification, but a center of merit or center of excellence. A center of merit is that they provide additional services, supports above and beyond a senior center. They provide community services, programs, activities, and connections for older adults and caregivers. Then there's a center of excellence, which is a higher, a higher-grade level. This is an exemplary senior center. They provide community services, they provide services and supports, programming. And with all that said, the senior center, that when they meet that level, these, these peers, these professionals who've developed this process of evaluation, have deemed the senior center here in Cre- in, in Wayne County a center of excellence. So with that being said, this is the third time they've received it. The first time was with, uh, Yvonne McLam, when she was a senior center director. Then the second, then five years later, they did it again with, uh, Aaron McAuliffe, who's the next, the next senior center director, and now this time around with Paula Edwards on board. They have created, uh, a, a great team of fifteen years of providing excellent services to the older adults and to their caregivers here in Wayne County. So I'm gonna read the certificate here, and it comes from the North Carolina Division of Aging and Adult Services, Paula. This is a certificate of excellence presented to the Peggy M. Senior Center, Peggy M. Seeger Senior Center, whereas the Peggy M. Seeger, Seeger's Senior Center, that's a tongue twister, in Goldsboro, North Carolina, has met all the criteria and achieved recognition and is hereby declared a center, a senior center of excellence for a five-year term from November first, twenty seventeen, through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And with this, our center of excellence certificate comes with financials, uh, uh, incentives as well. Each senior center in the state gets thirty-six hundred dollar share of the one point two million dollars that's allocated by the General Assembly for senior center support. Wayne County Senior Services will get three shares of that for five years. So it's about ten thousand dollars a year for the next five years, and, uh, you guys should be very proud of this senior center. They're one of the, one of the shining stars in the, in our region. We provide services and supports for older adults and programs for nine, nine counties in, in this region, and Wayne County is one of our shining stars, and we are very proud of them.
Thank you. Thank you, David. And I, may I comment real quick?
Yeah, of course. You gotta make a speech now.
You don't do it by yourself. Um, I have a great team. I also want to thank the former, the director before me, because she laid a, a good plan, and I was able to build on that. But I'm thankful for my staff. I'm thankful for the support I've received from the county and from the citizens of Wayne County. So thank you as well.
Thank you. Great job. That's the, we moved number two on up to the consent, so we've already covered that. Um, oh, you're right. We, we, our hour has been completed, and we've got our, our CPAs here to talk to us.
Every year it's different. So where do I advance up here?
You, you just keep hitting the right arrows?
No, well, you can try it. I don't know if it'll work.
Okay, we appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm Paul Moon. This is Dana Lane. We have completed the audit for June 30, two thousand and seventeen, for Wayne County, and, uh, we'd like to make some comments about it. Firstly, the Finance Department has received what is known as, is known as the CAFRA, which is the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And this is where the, uh, the Finance Department goes, raises the bar on, on the finance report that they issue. So they deserve special recognition for that, and they've done it for years and years. There's no reason why this current audit won't receive the same award. Congratulations on that. And the, uh, independent auditors report, uh, we have issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That means we have found no exceptions in the report, which lead us to believe that the financial statements, that the financial statements are anything but fairly presented, which is the highest level assurance that you can receive. Our responsibilities as auditors are the opinion that we issue. We gather audit evidence. Uh, we don't do a hundred percent audit, but we do statistical sampling, which gives us a valid basis for our opinion. And we have supplementary and other information that we present, uh, such as the tax schedule, uh, pension reporting, compliance, and, and the OPEB. Okay, as part of the report, the, one of the first sections is the management discussion and analysis, which is, uh, prepared by the staff, uh, mostly the Fi- uh, Finance Officer and County Manager. And it has, if you didn't, uh, look at the one part of the financial statement, you don't want to look at this, because it has financial highlights, it has overview of the financial statements. It shows how the fund statements and the government-wide statements flow together, which is very, gets complicated. It has comparative figures, which are not in the regular financial statements. Uh, they make budgetary highlights. Uh, they include economic factors, uh, factors, and they have next year's budget in there. So there again, that's a very informative statement. So with that, Dana's gonna go over some of the numbers and some of the extracts we made from the financial statements.
So we're gonna, um, start with the Statement of Net Position, which is on, um, page twenty-nine, if this is hard to read for you. And this is what's called, um, in the for-profit world, this is what's your, your business, uh, balance sheet. So this is what you, your assets, your liabilities, and then your net position or your equity here. And so I'm just gonna highlight a few things on here. Your cash is, of course, increased. Most of it's from the bond issuance, because that happened right near the end of the year, and you, you weren't able to spend it before the end of the year. And so your cash, um, is definitely much increased, over twenty million from the prior year, due to that fact. Um, also, you will notice that, um, current, um, your non-current assets, like your other capital assets, are much increased. And that's mainly from, you know, the new jail, the Maxwell Center, some of the Loop projects, some of those major projects that took place over the year. If you go down towards the ba- bottom, of course, because of that bond issuance, you did have an increase in your long-term liabilities. Debt, of course, went up, thirty-six million of it being from the bond issuance. And then your net pension liability was probably the largest increase on the balance sheet under debt, and that was a nine million dollar increase, and that is the state retirement plan. The state does their own actuarial, and, um, you don't have much choice in what that dollar amount is. And so that is booked based on what the state recommends. And overall, that gives you a total net position of a hundred and seventy-seven million dollars. And of course, this is full accrual accounting. A hundred and thirty-five million is governmental activities, and about forty-two million is business-type activities, and those are increased from the prior year. So on the next page, which in your statements is page thirty in the PowerPoint, you know, it's right here. And this is called your statement activities. Again, this is full accrual accounting, so it's been converted. Debt payments have been taken out. The bond issuance as cash has been taken out and converted over onto that prior statement. And what you'll notice here is this is your expenses for your primary government activities, general government, public safety, human services, and things like that, compared to the direct charges or contributions or grants in those areas. And then you'll see overall that when you take the expenses for your primary government and your program revenues that are directly to those areas, it cost about seventy-one million dollars to operate the general government in Wayne County. And here, you'll see one of the largest, of course, increases tend to be public safety, and that's a direct reflect from the new jail. And you'll see that a little bit later in a graph format. That's a lot easier to see this. In your actual financial statement, this is all on one page, but for the PowerPoint, we break it out in two. And this bottom section shows the business-type activities, your landfill, your EMS, things like the Sure Fund, the Maxwell Center, and here. Of course, the expenses increased here, but so did your charges for services and some of those kind of things. And again, it cost about one point seven million dollars for the business-type activities that had to be funded someplace else. And a lot of that, again, is full accrual accounting, having to fund that pension and some things like that that are not really cash, that you, non-cash activities here. Okay, so when you go down here, how do you pay for it? You pay for it with the property taxes, sales taxes, and things like that. And overall, we had an increase in Wayne County of about seven million dollars to the overall fund balance for government-wide statements. And there was a restatement that you can see in the note disclosures. The law enforcement separation allowance had to be booked on a full accrual basis this year, which caused your fund balance to decrease one point eight million to book that. Again, that is an actuarial done by the state and had no choice on the dollar amount of that restatement. Okay, so I think graphs speak a lot louder than just a bunch of numbers on a page. And so you can see here that the way you pay for the many activities that the county, um, funds is through local sales tax, property taxes, and then, of course, human services gets a lot of grants. And those are the three biggest pieces of the pie. They're all pretty comparative to last year, within one to two percent, either up or down from the prior year. So this is a pretty con- So this is a pretty consistent graph. If you laid the prior year side by side, the pie would look pretty much the same with some small variances. And then, again, this is the expenses by function from those same two statements, and you will see your bigger pieces of the pie, again, education, human services, and public safety are the three biggest pieces of pie that Wayne County pays for to operate the government here. So the next statement that we'll talk about is just governmental funds, and when I say governmental funds, I'm talking about Funds 100s, 110, all the way through 186, the general funds is what this represents. And you don't have a statement that looks exactly like this. I pulled out of a column from the statement that you have in your financial statements, page 32. Again, you'll see total assets of about 61 million. It's down about 1.7 million from the year before. You have liabilities and some deferred inflow of resources. Those are about the same from the year before, no big difference there. And you have a total fund balance of about $57 million, which is actually down about $5 million from the year before. The most significant change from that decrease of $5 million is $4 million that I believe you have decided to self-pay for the 911 center, and that's what caused that overall decrease in the fund balance, or your unassigned fund balance. There, okay? And then if we go to the next graph, which is on page 36, this is, again, the general fund only, Funds 100 through 186. And what you will see here is that your revenues were down from budget, but it actually was increased from the year before. You don't see it on this statement because you don't present comparative statements. However, it was up about $700,000 from the year before. Your expenses, again, you were under budget for your expenses, but they were up about $5 million, the most significant being $3 million in public safety and about $2 million in education, and that's about where the larger changes from the prior year is where you spent the money for expenses. But what you see on this page is even with all the activities and the transfers to fund other projects, you just decreased fund balance in the general fund by only $1.1 million. So, okay? So we're going to go to this next page, and so Paul went over the reports we issued for an audit, but we also required to issue other reports based on the funding you received from federal and state agencies. We issue a report on internal controls, and we had no findings for any of your internal control policies. We issue a report on your major federal programs. We did have some findings in medical assistance and adoption assistance, which you can read in your audit there. And then we issue a report on your state programs, and we had no findings in state programs. We issue a report of the communication of no material weaknesses, which means that we did not find anything materially wrong in the county as far as the controls, the operations, the financial statements, or things like that. We do use that report as a chance to make other recommendations. There will be a change based on the state auditors telling us how we need to calculate major programs in the future. So programs like Medical Assistance, TANF, WIC will no longer be in the calculation for major programs. What then will happen is they come out of our calculations, so a lot of programs that in the past have not been tested as major will now become major. So we made a recommendation that the Social Services and Public Health Directors review those programs, because I believe in being proactive, so that you don't have findings in the future. And if they would review those programs now, then maybe at 6:30, 18, you don't have findings in some of those programs that will now become major that have not been traditionally tested in the past, because there is a possibility for programs that have not traditionally been tested to now be tested as a major program. And then we issue a communication to those charged with governance, basically the commissioners. There was that one change in accounting policies, and that was that law enforcement separation allowance that I mentioned where we did that adjustment, that there are significant accounting estimates made. Significant accounting estimates are like your OPEB, your post-employment benefits, all these retirement estimates, allowance for bad debt, depreciation, lots of estimates made throughout your financial statements. We had no difficulties in performing the audit. There are adjustments made, but the county Finance Department has recorded all those adjustments. We had no disagreements with management, and management did sign a letter where they made representations telling that they answered all my questions, that they answered me truthfully, and they provided me with everything that I requested. And then just, you know, it was a big year for the county, and this does not even touch base on a few items, and in the end, just want to have special thanks to the Finance Department and other Wayne County Departments, because this is the earliest we have ever gotten the audit to the LGC, approved, printed, issued, and presented before Christmas. So that's a Christmas present to me, because I don't have to worry about it. So I thank them. And any questions?
Joe.
Well, really, the only one that I can think of right now is, under your report in regards to the findings in the medical assistance and adoption assistance program.
Yes, sir.
You've identified those. I take it corrective action has, in fact, been implemented, or?
They should be working on corrective actions. A lot of it had to do with document imaging.
And would that affect our federal funding on these programs?
It should not. The medical assistance isn't easier finding, for lack of a better word, because medical assistance, they are recertified every six months. So I don't expect the issues that existed with medical assistance to still be there, because they had actually self-corrected themselves before I had even tested them. But because of the fiscal year, when they started self-correcting, was too late for my test period. So medical assistance really, I think, is not an issue. There is a small issue with adoption assistance, which they are working diligently on, and it's a really detailed explanation that if you will call me, I can go into more detail with you. But they need to do some digging to correct this, because this will be an issue every year if they don't correct it.
Okay. That's true. Yes. I would like to go back to a comment served. You may, if I understood you correctly, you said that you all randomly picked items to look at, meaning that we would not expect you to look at every piece of paper that is in here. So it leads me to, and this is a question maybe for our, is this document initially prepared by our Finance Office or you all?
We prepared this document. It's part of our services, based on their information.
But the information that's in here, when I'm talking about preparing it, the litany of list of dollar figures and so forth and so on, I would assume has to originate.
From them.
From them.
Right.
So this document is initially prepared by our Finance Office?
In essence, we have the template to create the financial statements, because your software would not create a financial statement that looks like this. But they provide us with schedules.
They provide you with the raw materials.
They provide us with the raw materials. And what he meant is if a department pays 200 bills in this expense line item, we don't look at 200 invoices. We select a sample, and we inspect samples of those invoices.
So that's a random sample.
Right. We can't inspect, you guys probably have a million invoices a year. We can't inspect a million invoices. Not, you wouldn't want to pay us to inspect a million invoices.
But it raises the question of what an audit actually provides to.
An audit provides reasonable assurance that these balances are fairly stated, and we do a lot of testing to the balances that are on these statements. Plus, we test what's called your internal controls. So each department has a document that says, here's what we do. Here's who pays the invoices. Here's records them in the system. Here's who creates the deposits. And actually, this year, we visited every department this year with a Finance Department staff member, so that they're trained in this at the same time, and we did walkthroughs of every department this year to make sure that the controls, as they're written, are operating the way they're written.
If you may indulge me with just a vague question. How do you think, what do you think happened in Wayne County that caused?
I think that nobody was walking into that department to make sure their controls were in place, the way they should be written. And that's one of the things that we did this year, which I usually would pick three departments, four departments a year to walk through, but this year, in response to Wayne County, we walked through every department in Wayne County that has cash, me and one of your finance employees.
I just wanted you to assure us of that.
We did. And it was some minor suggestions, minor things to improve those controls, and your Finance Office has a good list of those suggestions. But they were all minor. There was no smoking guns.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anything else?
One additional comment I could. I want everybody to take note just how good these guys were when they produced our budget and how close they came to what it actually was. You guys are getting this thing down bad. I mean, oh, we're close, within $2,900? Give me a break.
Well, they can get in trouble with the law if they don't, not, but they do a good job.
They do. They do an excellent job.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to thank the Finance Department for doing a great job. Our outgoing manager. Take note. Okay. Moving on to the CDBG Dr.
Chairman.
I'm sorry.
We need a motion to approve.
I'm sorry. We need a motion to approve. We got a motion on the floors, any discussion? If I was a favor, please raise your right hand. So that's why I got him. Keep it straight. Thank you.
The new county manager out there.
Yeah.
Got our attention.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We, in fact, did have some discussion in regards to the CDBG Dr. Grants and so forth. There are several items here, so I want to make a motion. I move to adopt the CDBG Dr. Compliance Plans and Policies and the Financial Management Resolution with the deletion of George A. Wood and substitute William H. Pate.
So it's my fault. We have a motion on the floors, any discussion? If I was a favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay, number seven, the resolution by the Board of Commissioners.
I think we only did two, didn't we?
Let's see here.
I thought you did. I thought you did the first.
That was four and five.
Four and five. So we'll leave it at six.
Oh, okay. I thought you got it all in one fell swoop.
I did, too. I move the adoption of item number six on the agenda.
All right. Then motion on the floors, any discussion? If I was a favor, please raise your right hand. Did we do it right this time? Moving on to seven. Tammy was here earlier, our DSS Director, to discuss this, or any questions about the position classification pipeline? And I entertain a motion to approve.
Same move.
Then motion on the floors, any discussion? If I was a favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. And I do believe we need to go back into closed sessions after this.
Yes, sir.
And that is for the same reasons as before.
Yes, sir.
So motion on the floor to go to closed session.
Same move.
Motion on the floor, any discussion? If I was a favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. We will be back.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I was getting ready to go call on you. We made an error in our motion previously, so.
I need to amend my motion to award this bid on the farmers' market to include the budget amendment.
We have an amended motion to include the budget amendment. Is any discussion? If I was a favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
Was that $500 less than what it was?
About that. I know where I'm going to get to 500.
Well, let's go ahead and move right on into the work session and talk about our Facilities Master Plan, and I'll turn it over.
Okay. I'm going to skip the first two sections, because they were really just kind of a compilation of what you've done recently. And then the second section is the improvements that are in progress. So all of those, you know, the whole idea of this thing is to look ahead at what are we facing. And so really, we need to start at the heading that says Future Improvements on Page 101. And a lot of these items are things that, you know, we've discussed before, but I don't know how much detail you want to go into. Everybody's had it now for about a week or longer. Well, I think we had it in the last meeting.
They would do.
It was included. So everybody's had time to study it. I guess probably the best thing in the interest of time is just, does anybody have any questions on any of the items? Or is there any item you think we inadvertently left off?
Mr. Chairman, at our last meeting, I showed a little bit of concern in regards to these dollar amounts, and I suppose everyone has a similar feeling on, but I now understand that those are simply estimates and are not locked in figures.
Right.
So I've reviewed all of that, and I think it accurately reflects what we are looking for.
Somebody else have any questions about it? We've talked about these improvements in the future, and again, they're not all written in stone, either. I mean, they'll change, and as someone said earlier, it says, you know something, it's always going to come to bite you, so you're going to have to change priorities.
That's right.
To take care of what comes up before you.
And this is just a plan. It's not locked down. But what we were trying to do is make a good attempt of capturing everything you were facing.
Any additional comments on that?
And this will still give us some time to digest before our annual retreat in January. That's right.
We'll send you the film.
Is it my understanding that we wanted to adopt this as our Facilities Master Plan, or did we, is that what we would like?
Everybody changed to review it then.
So probably at our retreat, is that when we would look at doing that?
Our hope was that you would adopt it today, and then it would be ready to go at your retreat, and you would get into more detail there.
Yeah, this will be incorporated into other.
Right.
That's right.
Projects. Because there's some future things that are possible.
That's right.
You need a motion?
Yes, I do.
I move that we accept the Facilities Master Plan as it is with further study as we move down the path.
As a motion on the floors, any more discussion? If I was a favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay, we're to the work session, and I'm going to turn it over to George Wood's final county man comment. Watch out, guys.
Yeah, I don't have.
Make sure you got your cord roll, Steve.
I don't have too many. The main thing I did want to say is how much I've enjoyed working with you guys. Y'all have been a great group to work with, and I also want to thank you on behalf of myself and Pam for the reception last Thursday. We were just blown away at that. Y'all really outdid yourselves on that, and we really appreciate everything. And I particularly appreciate the street name. That was nice.
We thought we had really surprised you with that.
You did. You did. But again, we just appreciate everything y'all've done for us, and it's been a pleasure working with y'all. Y'all have made a lot of progress, and you've been a group that's tackled a lot of tough decisions, you know? Sometimes you get elected officials that want to keep punting stuff, and you guys haven't done that. You've dealt with it.
Commissioner Cummins, Mr. Bell. Come on, you first.
Okay. I guess I'm going to sound like a broken record again today. Cardinal Innovations has been put on hold by the state. Matter of fact, all of the leadership have been sidelined, and the state have taken over that organization. And East Point right now is in a holding pattern. As you know, East Point. As you know, East Point has more consumers than any county in the catchment area. So, East Point is very important, so we don't know what we're going to do yet. We in a holding pattern, pattern, pattern. East Point is still going to be East Point for a while until the state make a decision whether or not they're going to let us stay as East Point and bring on some more consumers of other counties or just leave it like it is. So, we don't know yet. Everything is on hold. So, that's my report.
Okay. Mr. Ray Cutt?
Yes, I won't go into any detail on any of the meetings, and you know, like all the rest of you, last couple of weeks have been busy, busy, busy. But I did want to mention that Saturday night, I did go out to Colonel Sage's social for Christmas. He had a good turnout. The weather was pretty favorable. That's the only thing. But I would like to tell Mr. Wood that, you know, we do appreciate what you've done. I feel like the Wayne County has moved forward more than four years since you've been here. We had some issues and you've helped get them straightened out and, you know, new issues pop up every day. Mr. Honeycutt, we feel like you're capable of filling the void, but you have got some big shoes to fill. But again, Mr. Wood, we do appreciate what you've done for Wayne County. And don't forget that you spent four years here, so you're part of our government family.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Bell?
Yes, I forego a lot of the meetings, as I said, we did have some Christmas parades to go to. That's always a highlight in this time of year for me. But I can't, I can't let it go by saying how much I appreciate George, you and Pam being here with us. I was on the working committee along with Commissioner Pate and Commissioner Kumari whenever we were doing interviews. And George remembered this the other day when I was talking to him. I asked him a question. I said, "Mr. Woods, do you have a problem firing a person for justification?" And he said, he didn't even hesitate. He said, "I don't have a problem at all." I said, "Well, he's the guy we need." He went to it. But having said that, we knew, all three of us knew at that time, who the right person was. And you have been such a, you've been just a tremendous leader for this county. I've learned a lot from you. And one of the things I keep thinking about is the turning back on the lights in my district from the Deanna exterior. You came up with these ideas along with many others. So, from that standpoint, I want to wish you and Pam all the best in the future. And finally, I'd like to say to all the citizens of Wayne County that are listening, I want to wish them a Merry Christmas and a prosperous New Year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kumari?
Mr. Wood, it was an interesting opportunity to share on the interview process when you came. There were other folk in the environment that I thought could have done a good job, but you proved it just what happened. You raised your, your level of expertise came in at a state where we needed. And I've always appreciated the fact that you backed up what you said to us with the state statutes that were unquestioned. It couldn't be questioned, because they matched what you said. And I think that's what we must always remember, that what is written is what we have to go by. And the state statute said, "This is how it's going to operate." We need to do that. And I believe that we have contributed to the success of this board, because I think this has been a successful board. But I never went home thinking that we were just shooting from the hip. Never felt like we were doing that. And I say to the public, we're going to still strive to do what's best for Wayne County and get along the best we can and be considerate of all of the publics in Wayne County, because you heard a little bit of that this morning, of people's different concerns, regardless of how we feel about what they say or think. They said it, so we have to be interested in what they say and have a plan, Mr. Honeycutt, to satisfy those concerns or at least answer them. But thank you, George. You've done a great job of doing that.
Thank you.
Well, George, we've come to the end of the road here. But it really has been a, an interesting time. I've learned a great deal from you. You've explained to me how you can come up with the ideas, but you need someone like George that can find a way to make it happen, whether or not it was the streetlights, the street paving or whatever. You got to find a manager that knows how to implement and turn an idea actually into a policy and a completed task. It's just amazing, really, what all we've accomplished. But it was a joint effort, I think, from a great board and a great manager. We're going to miss you. I think you saw that the other night. Think about that for a minute. There's a lot of managers that served 20 years and don't have a send-off like you had the other night.
You're right.
So, anyway, to everyone else out there, and I do wish everyone a very Merry Christmas. It's Christmas time, my favorite time of year. I don't go see Santa Claus anymore, but I still have wishes and I hope everybody's wishes come true.
Thank you, George.
Sure.
Like others, I've had many meetings go to, but I forego them, so I get to final comments. But before I leave here today, I want to make a comment about the fire service from our earlier public comments time. And I've been a part of the fire service in Wayne County in some form or fashion since the late 1970s, not near as long as Commissioner Acock. But I'm very passionate about the fire service and the guys that volunteer in the county. And for a point of clarity, Seven Spring Fire Department was flooded with Floyd and Matthew. And I'm almost positive it was impacted with Fran as well. But they've been through a lot and they're well-deserving of this help they're getting from the Golden Leaf and the state. And, you know, to come in and degrade 50 population they serve, well, for a point of clarity, they served 2,050 people in Wayne and Lenore County and with 625 of them being from Lenore County. So, it's a little disturbing me to hear those kind of comments without some like getting their facts straight. And it's not to engage in debate or arguing, it's just a point of clarity for everybody. And George, as I've said many times, I really appreciate your very detailed and methodical management style. I liked it and enjoyed it. And now for you and Ms. Pam, go enjoy yourself.
Thank you, Jim.
Mr. Bell, do you have something else to say?
Yes, as always, always. I didn't know that it was going to give George his little send-off here at this moment. But I'd just like to say that I've enjoyed you over the past four years. We've had some very interesting discussions. And what I like about George is that he's a good listener, you know? If you want to talk to him, he'll give you the time, you know, to sit and listen to you. I didn't talk about you guys. I talked about job performance and stuff like that. I'm very pleased at what you did while you were here. And, you know, as I said the other day on the film, that if you ever want to come back and be Craig's assistant, we'll take you back. No, no kidding. Good luck and hope you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you so much.
A couple places I did attend that I wanted to mention was, excuse me, I had the opportunity to go to the Sauson Power Department for their Christmas party and swear on their new offices with the year. And they have completed their, almost completely renovated their facility and it really looks nice. So, if you haven't been over there, stop by, take a look. Saturday, I was at the Reese Across America, Evergreen Cemetery. I think Mr. Acock, you were a part of one, weren't you?
Yes, sir.
But I was part of that. And I always enjoy it. And I was so glad this year wasn't near as cold as it was last year, because it was cold last year. The send-off we gave the other night, I thought that was really outstanding, how hard the staff had worked to make her send off what it was, particularly the Health Department and the Finance Department. I didn't realize we had such talented people in this county. They did an outstanding job. But as others have echoed, we're going to miss you, but, you know, we're going to have to move forward and Craig is going to, he's going to take us there. So, and he'll be calling you. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Bill.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before we adjourn, I think it would be appropriate for us to go down front and have a picture, a group picture made of Mr. Wood. If someone's got a camera or whatever.
You can even take one of us. Come, let's go down and do that.
Get next to George.
Does that mean I'm retired?
Heaven forbid you should ever consider that. All right, guys, look at me. Forget about Steve over there with that big camera. Say Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
You may take one.
You may take one.
One more, Steve.
You want this on the front page?
Me and the post office.
Those pictures are already there.
Thank you, we're...
Well, I guess we're 10 minutes early, huh?
I'm absolutely shocked. Can somebody adjourn this before y'all change your mind?
I'm trying to get it there.
There's another question? Stop it. Mr. Taylor?
I'm getting ready to adjourn.
Thank you.
Anybody else got anything? I'm making a motion with adjourn. We're adjourned.
I am so proud of y'all.